Okay. Good evening and welcome. Today is Tuesday, May 26, 2020. This is a special meeting and budget hearing of the Board of Education. If we could please start, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States.
And to the republic for which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Okay, this is a special meeting. We have a couple of important business items. And normally, we do not have comments, but I'm just going to open it up to Ms. Goodman, because there's a lot going on with all the changes. And I'm just going to let her update us on a few things.
Okay, a lot has been going on. Good evening, Board Trustees, colleagues, members, and parents. First, I have to say, as your superintendent, I am incredibly impressed with the spirit of giving back. There have been stories sent to me from families, students, teachers, administrators, leading us in Toccoho in this together. I have posted many of these uplifting stories on our Facebook page, and our students are making a difference in our community. Students have been making masks. They've been thanking healthcare workers, raising funds for Lawrence Hospital staff lunches, while supporting local eateries to send these lunches, begging and delivering foods to senior citizens, and thanking our essential workers in many and varied ways. But I want to say something very special about the Memorial Day virtual celebration, which was one such event that the community came together and honored our veterans who died fighting for our country for what we hold dear, freedom, and this year also to thank our emergency and essential workers. There were so many people involved, and I first and foremost really have to thank Mr. Charles Duchateau. He really produced this whole incredible virtual event. And I think we should give him some applause. Organizationally, also Scott DeBellas, our Assistant Principal, Dorine Pinto, the Administrative Assistant to the Principal, and Bart Linehan led us. Musically, we have an incredible music department, and I would like to thank Kaya Kim, Edie Reddy Fernandez, Sandy Garuffi, and again, Charles Duchateau. Our junior class, the students, and our advisors, Danielle Iverson, Lisa Lisi, did an amazing job. I hope you all saw it, because it really was incredible to watch. Our students that led us were Christian Epizito. He's our senior class president. Jack Doherty, junior class president. Yuri Lee, who designed the beautiful American flag logo. And of course, our essay winners and the teachers who judged them. They did such an incredible job. And I really want to thank our talented students. I hope that you all watched this on Facebook. The students did an excellent job, and we have so many great musicians and singers and dancers that it is something to behold. And what the kids said and the feeling about Memorial Day and about how our students respect our country and the people that work for it is just really very touching, and I want to thank them. And I want to tell you that all around us, our young people, our faculty and staff, are taking the lead in giving back to those in need. And this is what's going to help us through this pandemic and through our hard times, is to help others. And we appreciate the leadership of those involved, even when they're students, teachers, administrators, and community members. Please send us what you're doing, because we are Toccoho in this together. And it's not just helping our community. It's helping those in need in our state, in our country, and giving back. Because we are very fortunate, but not everybody is. And even if it's helping a neighbor who's old get groceries, that is something that you can do to help somebody and provide kindness. The other piece I wanted to talk about tonight, which the Board will be voting on, is the school calendar. As many of you know, our teachers work through, by executive order, by the governor, the spring break, including Easter, I mean, Easter was Sunday, but Good Friday and Passover and that whole seven days that they worked. And including the snow day that we normally give back to teachers. We have two or three, but we give back one. And they also work through Friday of Memorial Day without a break, because we were the first to close and we started right away. Therefore, and I know I got some questions from parents who want to, some parents just are, want to even go away. They want to know when the 180 days is up. We figured it out, and June 15th is our last day of school, when it's voted by the Board of Education later tonight. Another piece that I wanted to talk about that has been coming up is what's going on in New York State and the reopening of the state and what this means to the school. First of all, as you know, today was the first day of Phase 1 of the governor's reopening of New York. We, for Westchester, we made the cut in construction, manufacturing, wholesale supply chains, and select retail, mainly curbside pickup. Phase 2 is professional services, finance and insurance, retail, administrative support, and real estate leasing. Phase 3 is restaurants, food service, hotels and accommodation. And Phase 4 is arts, entertainment, recreation, and lastly, education. Governor Cuomo has said that summer school is not going to open statewide for in-class learning. We are prepared to give summer school for those students who need it. And as you'll see later in the budget presentation, we are expanding summer school for students who need extra intervention for this coming summer. We will also have a plan up on our website for work that students can do to prepare themselves for this next year, whether it's the P-class or whether they're going into 4th grade. We want to give students some work that they can do, some fun work that they can do to get themselves ready. Also, this governor said that he will release health and safety guidelines for school districts in June, so that we can help prepare for possible reopening in the fall. I want you to know that we are very seriously working on it. We want our students back. So we're doing a study of our classrooms to see how many students that we can fit in a classroom. We have some very large classrooms. While, of course, following state guidelines for social distancing. We will up our distance learning, if we still have to do that in the fall, to make sure that students have a full day. This brings us finally to high school graduation, which has been a moving target for a while. We originally came up with a drive-in, a drive-in graduation and the, or a virtual one, which is what 99% of the districts are doing, and we were told that that's not, that's not Toccoho tradition. And because Toccoho is such an amazing graduation, we put together one that's very similar to what you've always had, which is with the flower arch and the exchange of the flowers. But this one is on the steps of the high school. But this one is even more special in some ways, because the parents of the graduates will get to go up with them, their families and their parents. So it'll be, usually, as you know, in a graduation, it's one kid, one kid, one kid. We are giving the kids the personal time to spend and to have some special things read about them. Because we are doing this, and we want to get this done safely and also give students a personalized experience, we are doing it over three days. With schools closing early, it's June 15th, 16th, and 17th. It will take us five hours a day to do a third of the class. So it'll be 3:30 to 8:30 is what we're thinking of right now. I have to thank the people involved in it, because it's a lot of time putting in, planning it, and it's also a lot of time to be standing on your feet, five hours every day in the sun. I would like to thank Dr. Linehan first and foremost, and Scott DeBellas, and Dorine Pinto, who helped plan it. And then, as I keep on saying, the incredible high school advisors, Joel Abrams, Andrew Colaswano, and the hardworking videophotographer, as you've seen, if you've seen some of our things up on Facebook, and organizer, teacher Danielle Iverson. I would also, again, like to thank the PTA for the banners of the students around the high school. They are incredible, and the GO, and also for the, to the foundation for providing signs to the homes of every senior. When you see the graduation that we're putting together, and I know it's not what everybody wanted, but I think that you will find it quite, quite moving, quite amazing. And we will be streaming it live. That's 15 hours of streaming. I'm not sure everybody will want to watch it. We will condense it so that we can have one that, that will be meaningful to students and families with the highlights. We also have photographer, which was hard to find, since there are photographers doing this work right now. So you'll have very personalized pictures. I believe it will be the best graduation that I can imagine in this time, and I believe that our hard-working seniors and their families who love them deserve that. I know that some people would like us to do it later, but with the opening of New York State, it's every two weeks, if we are lucky, and that will already get us to the end of the year. The last thing is the schools, which are not open. They're just not opened in the summer, and that's the case. That's not going to change. We still have prom to think about after we're done with this, and maybe it will be able to be done in the summer, or maybe it'll be a prom reunion, because we'll have to check to see if we can still sponsor a prom, but the senior class does have the initiative to do it. Some people have thought about a scholarship instead, but it's up to the seniors what they want to do. Again, we have, although we were concerned and people wanted us to wait until restrictions are lifted, I spoke to the Chief of Police tonight, actually, and we want to be careful. COVID-19 is a contagious and dangerous disease. We know that. Things have happened to people that we all personally know. So I just think that that's really important, that everybody also who goes to graduation will be sending something out, that they're aware of the safety precautions, that they wear masks, that there's no visitors to watch the event, though it will be streamed live. We also, again, will be having a summer program. You'll be hearing more about that. In closing, I would like to thank all of you for your enormous support. I am very gracious for what you have, but how you've supported our district, the Board, the community, the teachers, and the administration. We couldn't have done it alone during this unprecedented, really tough situation for our students. I thank our students, too. But I have great optimism looking forward to the future and in our plan for the coming year because of what we've done so far. We will get better at it, no matter what it is, if, but we are hoping, no matter what, that we will have education together in the fall. Again, I know that we will work this out together through the pandemic, and I believe we will build even a stronger district. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We will now move on to business of the Board. Number one, adopt a revised 2019-20 calendar. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Toccoho Union Free School District hereby adopts a revised 2019-2020 school calendar dated May 26, 2020, which is subject to further revision as may be required due to any directives and/or executive orders issued by the governor and/or the State Education Department. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Laura, discussion. Okay, Ms. Goodman just discussed this about the 180 days that we will reach on June 15th. We have been prepared for the last couple of weeks to make this announcement, but we have been holding off, waiting for more directives from Albany, which has been very difficult to get. And as we all know, these are, you know, uncharted, you know, times. So we understand that, but yet, when you're trying to make these very important decisions on running a school, it's, it's a huge decision for us. I want to make it clear that the resolution does leave open to, in case the governor should have another directive, another executive order that for some reason should affect this calendar, then we will go, have to, I'm not even going to say go back to the calendar the way it was, but we will have to make the amendments based on the executive order. So we are prepared to go forward, knowing that if there is a change out of Albany, which we do not anticipate, given the guidance we've been given, but we do have to leave that open, because again, we're just not sure what the governor may or may not do. All in favor? Thank you. Okay. Number two, accept a resignation. Resolve to accept the resignation of Lauren Zaroski Trul as Secretary to the Superintendent and District Clerk effective June 30, 2020. Is there a motion? Teres, second. Peter, discussion. I would just want to thank Lauren for her service here. Not only is she the Secretary to the Superintendent, but she serves the Board of Education as District Clerk, and she has done it with integrity and dedication above and beyond. We're very excited for her. She has been offered an amazing opportunity for her career and for, suits her and her family well, and we wish her the best of luck. All in favor? Number three, appoint a Secretary to the Superintendent and District Clerk. Be it resolved that Robin Dunn be appointed Secretary to the School Superintendent effective July 1, 2020, subject to local and state civil service laws and regulations, at an annual salary of $87,590. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education approve the terms and conditions of employment of Miss Dunn as set forth in agreement dated May 26, 2020, and authorize the Board President to execute the same. Is there a motion? Teres, second. Cynthia, discussion.
Michelle, can I say something? That was appoint her for Superintendent to the Secretary of Schools, not District Clerk. I thought I heard you say.
No, I think, did I say District Clerk?
I thought you did.
Okay, let me read it again, just to be sure, okay? Be it resolved that Robin Dunn be appointed Secretary to the School Superintendent effective July 1, 2020, subject to local and state civil service laws and regulations at an annual salary of $87,590. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education approve the terms and conditions of employment for Miss Dunn as set forth in an agreement dated May 26, 2020, and authorize the Board, Board President to execute the same. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Peter, discussion. Okay, we welcome Robin and wish her the best of luck in her new role. All in favor? Okay, number four, approve a stipulation of settlement. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Toccoho Union Free School District hereby approves the stipulation of settlement between the Toccoho Teachers Association and the district dated March 26, 2020, and hereby authorizes the interim superintendent to execute all documents pertaining to the same and to take all actions consistent with the terms thereof. Is there a motion? Laura, second. Peter, discussion. Okay, I just want to make a comment on this. This is a stipulation that basically is a settlement with the, with the teachers' union as to the days worked in this calendar year, as per their contract. And we have every desire to meet the terms of the contract, of the teacher's contract, and honor it. The governor, again, by making changes and mandates as to when teachers and school had to be in session, made us, you know, mandated that changes were made. So this stipulation clears that up, if, in fact, June 15th, something that we do not anticipate at this time changes with an executive order. So I want to thank the teachers' union. I especially want to thank Jean Whalen, who's the President of the TTA, because much time, hours, and commitment to working out what's best for all, you know, and putting the needs of the students in the district first. So I just want to thank, thank the leadership on that. All in favor? Okay, we are now going to adjourn the special meeting. Resolve to adjourn the special meeting. Is there a motion? Laura, second. Cynthia, discussion. All in favor? Thank you. And we're now going to move on to the budget hearing. There's a budget presentation and public comment on, on the proposed budget for, actually, on the adopted budget for the 2020-21 school year. Amy?
I'm going to share it. A second. Okay. Good evening, everybody. The Toccoho Union Free School District budget has been in development, as you know, since early March. Our overarching budget mission is to design a responsible budget that meets the educational needs of our students and fiscal needs of our school district and community. This budget raises the tax levy only 1.97%, which is below the maximum allowable tax cap increase permitted by New York State. All our budget presentations are on our website, and I invite you to look at them. Again, our points of pride. Our goal is to maintain the points of pride by continuing all programs with our supportive faculty and staff, academic offerings, and breadth of extracurricular activities that engage students to excel in their learning and academics, the arts, community service, and athletics. The goals of our strategic plan is at the core of everything we do in this budget, is to ensure we have highly trained staff, robust academics, with a focus on literacy, critical thinking, and technology, and that we teach the social and emotional skills so that our students can engage in their learning to fulfill their potential and position them for success in college and later in career and in life. The mission and strategic goals of our school district are preparing every student for excellence. The COVID-19 pandemic and the public health restrictions imposed to help limit the spread of infections have affected our students and community. There is a blow to the economy, unprecedented in the scope and pace, and a change in the way we had to deliver education. Because of this, more than ever, we need to focus on our mission. Adopting a fiscally responsible budget that maintains and enhances the district's educational programs to meet the needs of our students and is sensitive to revenue sources and state aid cuts. We were confronted with an unprecedented public health challenge with COVID-19, which may have and can affect our school community's health, wellness, the education of our students. That's why we need to focus on our students and programs while making fiscally responsible education decisions. Adopting a fiscally responsible school budget has in it this year the potential of more cuts in state aid over the school year and the fallout of this virus on our students, families, and community. This budget focuses on direct services and the needs to have our teachers and support staff more than ever in the classroom, while understanding the economic environment for the members in our community. Our enrollment has remained stable for many years. We do not want to lose the programs and gain momentum with our strategic plan, goals for excellence, and focus on the needs of our students. So we looked at our administrative overhead and the fact that Cottle has more students and Cottle has less administrative staff. This slide you've seen before shows the number of students in each school compared to the number of administrators and secretaries. Here it's shown in another way, where you can see that the middle school, high school has four secretaries together, not the combined one, two principals, and an AP. It always had a shared AP, whereas Cottle has one principal, one AP, and two secretaries. It was asked, I think, by Pete Casson last time, what were the numbers of teachers? Was it more in the middle school, high school? And actually, looking at teachers, TAs, aides, and monitors, there are 91 teachers in Cottle, 74 teachers, TAs and monitors combined in the, in the middle school, high school. So there are less teachers in the middle school, high school, and more, in terms of staff, I shouldn't even say teachers. I think there are less teachers, too, but TAs, aides, and monitors altogether, Cottle has more. The big difference is the number of aides, of course, that we need in the elementary school. So this restructured way of thinking, again, this is not taking the middle school students and putting them in the high school. We're still looking at middle-level education and high school education, but we're looking at it in a fiscally responsible way and the deployment of people differently. With one shared principal, we always had one shared, one shared assistant principal between the middle school and high school. And then we're taking the athletic director for a small district like ours and making that person an assistant principal of student life, student services, and athletics. That's budget neutral. We're reducing one secretary to three secretaries in the middle school, high school. We are reducing the secretary to the assistant principal, and the other secretaries between the three of them will pick up that, that slack. The restructured secondary school really gives us a lot of savings. Again, it's mindful of the developmental level of the students. It's still looking at sixth graders as sixth graders. But by reducing one principal, we save money to keep teachers and programs and enhance our programs. Our first budget that came out did not have this in it, but now that we saw that's what happened to state aid, we need to look further. So we looked at a, at, trying not to look at teachers and programs, we were able to cut $250,000 in administrative overhead. And again, our administration are very important, but we have strong administrators that can get this done. We thank the people who worked with us, but we can, looking at being the small district that we are, get this done in a fiscally responsible, sustainable way. And we still, with this configuration, prepare students for excellence. There is an increase of coherence between the middle school and high school. We don't have that many teachers. They can certainly talk to each other and see what the needs are, both vertically, horizontally, across, and across subjects, and really prepare for students when they come into 6th grade for what they need for high school. We also looked at other administrative efficiencies, and in a district this size, so we had, we do thank our Assistant Superintendent for curriculum instruction and technology, but now that she is going, we looked at reducing this cost, so that we just have a director, which is a less expensive way of delivering the services, and that cut the budget by $40,000, which is very significant. And for a small school district, we, at this point, do not need an Assistant Superintendent. We also have an Assistant Superintendent for Business, who, on her own, with our negotiations, reduced her salary by $10,000. So with the total restructuring of the middle school, high school, under one principal, we have a total reduction administratively of $300,000. We kept a lot in the budget of what we originally wanted to move our district forward. So in the middle school is having more academic intervention in terms of a reading teacher. These are all part-time positions, a math teacher to help our students, and we have another .2 math, so there'd be altogether 1.0s, not from what we already had, for reading and .4 in math. We know our students need extra help when they get to the middle school, high school, and it's, we want to make sure that it is there. So we're starting that in the middle school, so students are ready for the hard courses. In the high school, we have lots of complaints about large class sizes, and if Toccoho is not the district, a small district like Toccoho that can offer small class sizes, and with our supportive teachers and staff, all students will do better. Our honest students, some of our honest classes had so many students in it. They will do better on APs. Our kids who need a smaller class size will do better. Look, I'm a teacher at heart, and when people say class size doesn't matter, anybody who's a teacher knows it absolutely matters, and kids get much more individualized, differentiated instruction when they are in a smaller class size. That's just a fact. And any teacher knows that. And anybody who went to school probably realizes that, too. District-wide, we are looking at compensatory services. Like I said, we are increasing the number of students even this summer, a wider breadth of students who will need compensatory education. In the middle school, we are supportive of girls lacrosse. It's really taken off, and we want to make sure that there's equity in girls' sports in terms of keeping lacrosse and adding to it. We're hoping for varsity. We're hoping for varsity cheerleaders, because we have some great cheerleaders in this district already. We want to make sure that kids who are maybe not doing it club-wise will also join. But we feel like there's enough for everybody. And our teams in Takahoe, school districts should be cheered on by these talented cheerleaders. So we're hoping for that. We're adding two new clubs, both in the middle school and high school. Because of technology and students learning financial literacy, we want to make sure that clubs focus on that. And with having the great lab that we have down in the elementary school, our students can use that after school in the high school. We have some curriculum additions that we have, because we want to make sure that our students are getting contemporary teaching and learning, and they're learning at critical thinking, and they're also learning in terms of more engaging curriculum that will help them be very mindful of 21st century skills that they will need later in life and in college. The same thing with our middle school curriculum. It really needed an update, and we're getting there in this budget. Finally, the elementary school. From the second I got here, I did hear that there was not a decoding program in K-2. That program that we're bringing in will help all students learn to read. It's not a program for students with dyslexia. It will certainly help students that don't have phonemic awareness just intrinsically. But it will also help all students learn to read, because you need phonics in the English language to learn to read. And it's a very strong phonics program. So we feel it will help all, we know it'll help all learners. Additionally, we are, still have reading wonders. We had to pay for one more year of that. We have a science pilot exciting program. And then I Ready, which has been very successful, thanks to John Marash and Dr. Ellen, I forgot her last name, Ellen McDonald, thank you, and bringing that in, because that has been very successful. But we're also adding an intervention and enrichment piece to it. We have been hearing from some parents, especially that their students need enrichment in their elementary education. And again, our innovation lab is very high level, and we're committed to bringing the robotics program. Last time I had a question about what we're doing in terms of COVID-19. And our floor auto scrubber will help us do deep cleaning. Our COVID-related cleaning supplies, which are very specific, will help us do deep cleaning with the supplies we already have, but there are specific supplies that we're adding to that. We are doing furniture replacement in this budget, but we reduced it a lot from our original budget when we thought we had state aid. And then we're doing some transfer to capital of $50,000. We need more security surveillance. We need an upgrade on the fire alarm system, small interior reservations, infrastructure repairs, and some other small repairs in our facilities. This budget focuses on, again, the research-based and systemic reading instruction, curriculum development and mapping, project-based learning, social-emotional learning, co-teaching, and multi-tiered systems of support. This will all be done with our teachers in terms of staff development at a reduced spending of $15,000, because we are not looking to outsource our staff development with Bosse's this year and doing it in-house. Again, we are continuously improving our technology. We are buying more devices for our students. We have, if we've realized anything from this, another thing from this pandemic is our, we need to have a device in every student's hand that works. We are also purchasing, the board voted last time, on the compliance issues with New York State and data privacy. We need somebody to do that for us. And we are ordering some new interactive flat panels, not as many as we wanted to, but we want to make sure that we can add more devices, because we know kids will need that next year. This budget supports favorable class size, something that this district and this board is committed to, innovative programs, expansion of extracurriculars, and really keeping our extracurriculars. And then with our new AP, AD, we're hoping that they'll all be expanded, because we also talked about last time, more community service. And I'm seeing that our kids want to do it, even in this pandemic, you can see that. Our reading instruction, having more reading intervention with Orton-Gillingham techniques, reading support in sixth to eighth grade, a phonemic program in K-2, which has been really an outcry in the district since I got here, and I've heard you. New curriculum tied to the next-generation standards so that kids can think critically and learn collaboratively. Staff development in contemporary teaching, support for professional learning programs and social-emotional learning, our Ruler program, and again, a commitment to fiscal responsibility, looking at keeping teachers and programs and a better deployment of our administrative staff. And again, the bottom line is we want to prepare every student for excellence. We want to make sure that we are moving our strategic plan along. During this unprecedented time, we recognize how critical it is to ensure that we are focused on our programs and services and support our student achievement priorities. Thank you. Lee will take over from here. And then at the end, we will take questions. And one more thing. I hope I'm still on this. I got a little, you guys could still hear me, right? I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows to vote. June 9th at 5 o'clock, there are two Board of Education seats that are available for a three-year term. Please mail in your vote. There's also a drop box at Cottle School. Thank you.
Okay, I believe.
Now Lee will.
Well, okay. So we'll see if we can advance the slides better this week. But again, this is what we have reviewed over the last few board presentations. As I've told the board and the district before, the Office of the State Controller provides us with the regulations on how to calculate our allowable tax levy increase. We go through that calculation based on the input that they provide us, as well as our current information. And based on what we hear from the Office of the State Controller, we are allowed, as a district, to increase our tax levy limit 3.4%. But as Ms. Goodman mentioned earlier, and I'll continue to mention as we go through the presentation, our budget as proposed and as adopted by the Board of Education at the last meeting has a tax levy increase of just 1.97%. So we are not going as high as permitted. We are just keeping the tax levy increase to 1.97%. And Dr. McDonald, if you could advance the slide? Thank you. Our initial revenue budget is, as adopted, we are proposing, as told, a 1.97% increase in the property tax. So the tax would be $29,888,000, an increase of $563,000 over the prior year or the current year's tax levy. We also have some other revenues that provide resources to the district. We have pilots and sales tax revenue. And we cut our projections over the course of these few months based on the change in the environment and the economy of the United States and the county and the state. So we show a 5.5% or so increase in pilots and sales tax. We do show a more, a higher budget in charges for other services, and that primarily is students who come to the district and are placed by other districts in Takahoe, and they provide tuition for those students. In addition, we have other revenues of $269,000. Those are some rentals of services, interest income, things of that nature. And then finally, we have a state and federal aid, which we show here as a decrease of 5%. Actually, the decrease to our aid in other than expense-based aid, so this is just pure aid from the state, is higher than, the decrease is more than 5%. It balances off a little by expense-driven aids, which were not cut and which are based on the expenses we spend this year. We receive monies next year. So some of those expense-driven aids are increasing, others are decreasing, and the net number is a decrease in 5%. We are watching that carefully to see what will happen next year, but that is our best projection at this time. And you can advance that to, the expenditure budget shows that we're projecting, or we're requesting, a 2.65% increase budget-to-budget in our total expenditures for a total budget of $36,423,200. And generally, as you can see, that we have kept the general support areas relatively closer to budget. There is a larger increase in instruction and transportation based on contractual obligations, as well as increases that we have found in providing transportation amongst the students to our, both our own district and to special education schools. And some other areas, we have seen some variances to budget that are in the favor of the district in benefits and in debt service. When we compare the expenditure budget of $36,423,200 to the baseline revenue budget as adopted of $34,293,590, the difference between those, the revenues and the expenditures, is a negative number of $2,129,610. And as discussed with the board, the board has chosen to, if we can advance to the next slide, the board has chosen the option four to fill that gap with appropriated fund balance. So monies that we have in our savings accounts that are not restricted to other reserves, if they are needed in their entirety, that would be filled by using that fund balance. Rather than cutting program or raising taxes, we will use the fund balance as necessary to balance the budget as required by law. This slide shows the history of both the tax levy since 2015-16 school year, as well as the budgets that we adopted in the district from that same period. And as you can see, over the six-year period, the six-year average for the tax levy increase is 1.67%. And the six-year average for budget-to-budget variances is an increase of 2.38%. Graphically, that same information looks like this. The red column is our budget percent change. The yellow column is our tax levy percent change. And the line across the top is our enrollment over these years. And as you can see, our enrollment increased somewhat rapidly up through the 2018-19 school year and then leveled off. However, our budget did not increase at the same rate of growth. So over the last few years, we picked up somewhat on the budget, but now we're bringing that back in line with the enrollment trends as well. And finally, I want to just remind everyone that there is a second proposition on the budget, I'm sorry, on the ballot for voting on. The board, earlier this spring, voted to establish a capital reserve fund, which is basically a savings account that the district can put money into if they have money, if the district has monies available, to build up up to $5 million over 10 years, monies that we could use to do improvements, repairs, reconstruction, or renovations to the capital needs of our district. It's funded through budgetary appropriations or transfers from other funds that are not required to be paid into other accounts. So this year, we are only asking the taxpayers to allow the district to set this savings account up for capital reserves, and we're not funding it in this year's budget. There's no impact to the taxpayers in the 2020-2021 budget. And in future years, if monies are available and the board so chooses, monies can be placed into this reserve up to a maximum of $5 million to fund various improvements or reconstruction around the district. And in order to spend those monies, it would require a vote by the taxpayers as well. So that is the plan, and it's a plan to just be more prudent with any surplus funds that might be allowed to be in a capital reserve fund. And that might reduce the need for borrowing in future years. We may not need to borrow as much if we have these funds available to do infrastructure repairs, as well as improvements to the district's capital and buildings and grounds. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, the presentation, because it's a board hearing, we take questions from the community. I have some questions to read. Michelle, can I read them?
I'll read ahead.
Okay, so there's questions and comments. First, there's a question, a comment from Jean Whalen, teacher, president of the teachers' union. "Good evening, members of the board, Ms. Goodman, and members of the Takahoe community. On behalf of the teachers, I want to thank the parents for all their support these past few months. The work of the teachers administering e-distance learning to our children could never have been accomplished without the parents as partners. Thank you. Tonight, I am here to speak in support of the proposed budget for the school year 2021. Supporting this budget is essential to fighting the devastating impact that COVID-19 has had on the education of our students." Hold on, just, I'm sorry. "On our students, and I urge everyone to vote for it by June 9th. The budget successfully balances the need to be fiscally responsible in an unknown COVID-19 world with the need to maintain quality education for the children. We cannot allow this disease to negatively impact this generation of children. And this budget uses our resources in the most efficient way possible to support students. The budget maintains class, small class size, allowing teachers to pay greater attention, individualized attention to their student. It maintains staffing levels, ensuring that each student has qualified, experienced educators and support staff available and ready to help in this challenging time. It also maintains our programs such as art, music, and STEAM that are so essential to developing the whole child. The restructuring of the administration in the middle and high school will serve to develop efficiency in decision-making, cohesiveness, and professional development, and an environment of cooperation and collaboration between middle and high school teachers and staff. The clear delineation of responsibilities and duties for assistant principals will create an administration that is even more responsive to the needs of students, faculty, staff, parents, and the community. The teachers, with the continued support of this community, will, as always, work tirelessly to support our students, to develop ourselves professionally, learn new techniques and strategies, implement new programs and curricula as we face an unknown future. Don't let COVID-19 harm the children's future. Invest in their future, and please vote for this budget on June 9th. Thank you, Jean Whalen, TTA president." I have another comment or question from Natasha Zicoik, 76 Lake Avenue. "Many districts have announced that they will end the school year early. Is Takahoe, what is Takahoe doing to end the school year early as well? And if so, when will the update be presented to parents?" So again, this was just answered, so it's a good question. I have gotten that question in my email, too. Yes, teachers were required to work through spring break this year, which meant they worked extra days, and they also worked Memorial Day and snow days. And the students and the teachers reached 180 days on June 15th. So thank you for that question. That is the last day of school. Amber and Glenn Cassis asks, "Is there sufficient money in the budget for the replacement of Chromebooks or other technology that has been used in distance learning, given the additional wear and tear these devices have incurred being in homes? According to Dr. McDonald, we have actually been seeing less wear and tear overall on the Chromebooks since they have been home, because none of them are traveling back and forth to school. We have a hardware repair service through Southern Westchester Bosse's that we budget for annually. In addition, starting with the 2019-2020 school year, we began purchasing three years of accidental breakage insurance on all new Chromebooks, and we will continue doing this moving forward. We will be purchasing Chrome tablets for our kindergartners and first graders on one grade level of replacement Chromebooks this summer. This gives us at least 90 Chromebooks to use for loaners or replacement while others are repaired." Susan Mealy, 67 Archer Drive. Susan Mealy, 67 Archer Drive. "As recently as today, I spoke to parents in the district who was aware of the proposed restructuring of TMS, THS, but not that specifically this means Dr. Lindahan will stay and Mrs. Seifel will depart. Could you please make clear to the public so there's no misunderstanding? Also, could you please explain how, when people received their ballots for the June 9th vote? It should also be made clear that mail votes, votes should be mailed by around 6:3 or 6:4, as any vote that arrives after 6:9 will not be counted. Thank you." Thank you, Ms. Mealy. And yes, it does mean that, you know, I don't like to talk about individual people. So the middle school position has been reduced. Dr. Lindahan will stay, and he will proceed over both schools. Whilst both schools are still separate schools in terms of developmental level, he will oversee them. There is an assistant principal already that shares those two schools. And there also is an assistant principal, who was the AD, whoever that is, and also student life. And we add student services. So it's just using staff differently in a school that is smaller than, that has less, fewer students than the students in the elementary school and fewer staff. We believe that this is a prudent way to keep teachers and students with their programs and with their teachers, and cutting none of that. In fact, making sure that we continue to be a school district that provides a lot of support in our students, especially in light of COVID-19 and all the students have been through. We also, okay, as far as when the ballots were mailed, I will ask Lauren Trual, our district clerk, to answer that question?
They were mailed late last week, so they should be arriving in homes shortly.
Okay. And yes, they should, we, they need to be in by 5 o'clock on June 9th. We also have a ballot box at Cottle that people can also put their ballot in. So I think I answered all of those questions. Okay. Any other questions come up?
There are no other questions at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone on the board, any of the trustees, have a question or a comment regarding the budget hearing or any of the comments made?
I just have a, I have a quick, Ms. Goodman, when you mentioned about, the question about the restructuring in the middle school, can you speak just a little bit about the director that's coming in, that the new buyer for, I believe it's curriculum and technology, and how that person's experience will also lend itself to restructuring of the middle and high school?
Yes, so I would like to, I did mention this last time, but that's a very good point. The new director of curriculum, instruction, and technology is a middle school administrator from the Hastings-on-Hudson School District. He knows that's one of his main pieces to help us work on next year, to work with the middle school and high school teachers on this curriculum in general, because we want to make sure we have curriculum maps, but also help the principal and all staff relate to this different restructuring, which again, is under one principle, not that different, except more coherence between the programs. And also hearing his expertise in technology, in math, in critical thinking, and project-based learning to make sure that we make sure that this, this new restructuring works in the best way it possibly can. We know that Hastings-on-Hudson has a great reputation. I watched their last board meeting. They did not want him to go, just like it's hard to part with any administrators, but I feel like he will be a gain for us, and especially with his secondary school focus and experience.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I did have a question about the, so the box that you mentioned that was going to be outside Cottle. Is that something that's going to be open for people to ballots all the time? How is that going to work?
Um, yes, that's going to be open. Ms. Trual? Is that, that box is, is that box in yet?
I believe it's being installed either today or tomorrow.
So it's not just for the June 9th? It's for all the time before that?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we do hope that people will also mail their
Right, right.
Their ballots. It's a little, you know, it is another way to send them, and you have plenty of time if you mail them early.
Right.
I know that there's a community group, some kind of forum you might want to wait till and then mail them in. I know the PTA is sponsoring that.
We, did we work out the logistics of that box? Is, are the ballots going to remain in that box until June 9th? Are they going to be removed each night? And if so, how are they going to be handled?
So I was speaking to our attorney today, actually. And he is going to speak to Ms. Trual. I don't know if he spoke to her yet because she's the district clerk. And I was absolutely thinking about that, too, in terms of the security and who touches those ballots. So he is, he had some ideas around that. So I can continue to share that with you and the community.
Okay. Uh, any update, Ms. Goodman? I'm sorry. Go ahead, you go first, I'm sorry.
I mean, the board wanted the best opportunity for people to get their ballots in, especially given the short time. So I appreciate that. Some districts are doing this and some districts aren't doing it. Again, we're all in uncharted territory. So we have to make sure that we, it's the same way even when we collect the mail, that we make sure that we do it under the most secure circumstances, with lots of checks and balances.
Right, no, I think it's a great addition to have. It gives people more time. It also gives people some, some people may get a little more confidence that if their ballot was received, they physically drop it off. So I think that's great. Any update regarding the variance for us to combine the middle school, high school? I know we had gotten that more important first level of approval. I think we were still waiting on that, that final level from the, from the state. Any update in that, or we're still waiting for that?
We have the first approval that we got right away. I mean, it was very, it was, they would think it would be a problem. And now the second level, the person just contacted us today.
Okay. All right, great. Just one clarification, too, and I know this has been in other budgets. I just, for some reason, didn't, didn't focus on it. But the, we're adding an engineering class to the high school. Is that an elective or an AP that's being added?
So the engineering class has been here before. We're adding more supplies, a better
Right.
We're going to add a different class, which I hope to add next year, and that's why I switched it to clubs. That was an entrepreneurial class. That ended up being costly for us to do this year. So everything we spoke about before we hit the budget cut, we did.
Right.
Engineering class needs supplies, and that's where that was.
Is that the same class as the architecture class? Or that's separate, different?
I'll let Bart, Bart, can you answer that question? Dr. Lindahan?
You'll have to give me a moment to, to get him for you. Here he comes. Give him a minute to
Peter, the architecture class will remain. We have a teacher who is familiar with engineering and ready to teach it, so we're utilizing her talents and resources.
Oh, so that is a new class?
Well, conceptual physics, we've morphed it from conceptual physics into engineering and application of physics in engineering.
So it is a redeployment?
Yeah, better word, better word.
Okay, it is a separate, it is a separate class, though, from the architecture class. That's a separate class.
Yes, it's a separate class in the architect. We'll maintain, that's been highly successful.
Right. And the engineering class now, is that, I'm sorry, is that an AP or an elective?
That's an elective. Looking to get a lot enrolled in it. They have a choice between AP chemistry, you know, AP biology, and obviously the architecture class and forensics are other elect. Forensics is the other elective, mostly for seniors.
Right. Good, okay, great, thank you very much. That's great, good to hear.
And engineering is something that not only develops everybody's mind, it is, it's one of the careers that is, has totally taken off.
Yeah, and it's a, it's a career that a lot of high schoolers coming out of high school tend to be intimidated by and maybe don't pursue in college because they think it's too hard. So I think getting our kids an early introduction to it and maybe get some of that fear off of, off of it, maybe makes them more likely to pursue it in college. Engineering is something that the private sector needs from, from US, you know, college graduates. And we don't have enough engineering college specialists, so, I mean, majors. So I think it's a great idea to get our kids exposed early to engineering and maybe get them, you know, excited about doing it in college. So it's great, it's awesome.
Right, and I think everything we're doing with robotics, the new assistant, the new director of curriculum is a technology teacher, so I think we can infuse some of that, too. And having worked with students going into college, kids who have, and kids who are in college, I see how they do. And if they're in engineering and they took it in high school, they have such a leg up than students who did not.
Yep, that's great, very good. Thank you.
I have a quick question about, maybe, and, you know, the, the one that was cut out, the entrepreneurial, I think you called it. Is there a way maybe to, and maybe Dr. Lindahan has a question for you, to do that as a club?
Well, that's what I'm hoping to do with the club. That's why I added those clubs, because I felt like we just weren't doing. I want an entrepreneurial club, so that we can at least get started. And then hopefully, next year, we can figure out a way to do it. Because I think it was very exciting.
Guidance is up standard with career opportunities. They have videos now. They really enhance what's out there for students as far as giving them backgrounds and careers. Not just the top notes, but basically in-depth, what you need for training, salaries, the type of what it would, a day in the life of an engineer would be, an architect, a lawyer. So this would enhance that further.
Great.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, I just have a question, Michelle. Um, I don't, I guess this is a question for Ms. Goodman. It may also be for, for Lauren. I just, I wanted to clarify for the public in the community how the absentee ballots are going to be processed. And when they're, when the count is happening, will that be livestreamed? And the, will, will there be like cameras on it? Like, what will that look like for people who are worried about, I guess, the budget process in general, confidentiality, and also validity of the, of the election, given that it's such a unique format this year?
Right, we were just actually talking to our lawyer today about that, too. So you know what's on our minds. Ms. Trual, would you like to answer that, what we've heard so far?
Right, so I think at the last meeting, we outlined sort of, you know, a three-step process in terms of opening the actual physical ballots to ensure confidentiality. At this point, we are still really waiting on final guidelines from our attorneys with regard to live streaming and how that will all happen. But at this point, you know, we, we do understand what our logistics will be to ensure confidentiality in terms of verifying the oath envelopes against the register of voters, to ensure that they are verified registered voters, and then extracting the ballots from those envelopes without unfolding them so that the, you know, the results, the votes stay confidential. Moving on then to phase two, where those ballots are separate from the envelopes which had the name, then unfolding them and having a record process. So that is what we know at this point.
Right, and we have the question about the live streaming to our attorney today. So we are finding out how we do it. Can we do it? You know, I, I think, I mean, if we can, we will. There are other questions about, about all of that. So we just want to make sure, again, uncharted territory and that we are doing everything in the safest in terms of socially distancing, and also confidentiality, and making sure that it can hold up to, to our vote. So if we can do it, we will be doing it. And hopefully, Mr. Miller, Gary Miller, will be able to stream it for us. He's on the call, so I think we should put the date down.
Okay, anything else?
Kind of curiosity, though, I'm more just curious than anything else. When would this vote counting start? Does it, do you start counting the votes at 5 o'clock? Or do you actually, are you able to start? Obviously, it's going to be a manual process. It's going to take a long time, especially if we have a lot of participation, which I hope we do. You know, how long, you know, when, when can we, when can you guys start counting? Can you start earlier in the day, or you have to wait until 5:00 PM?
That's what we understand. I think we'd be able to start at any other time.
So depending on how many ballots we get, this could be something where we're not, we don't get an answer until very, very, very late in the evening, maybe even
We're not going to get an answer until very, very late. But since it says they have to be in by 5:00 PM, I don't see, unless there's some law that says we can count them before, I don't, we're just not going to do it.
Maybe we actually have an answer until the next morning, potentially, right?
Well, didn't we, yeah, I think that was, I don't know. I, I feel like we've been back and forth so much. But I thought we said that the announcement is the following morning, right?
We said that.
Am I wrong?
We have a meeting, we have a meeting scheduled for the big day to accept, to accept the results, yeah.
We moved the meeting, which was originally scheduled for June 9th, to the, to June 10th.
Okay, maybe that's
We would not be able to accept the results on June 9th.
Okay.
It's just going to be too late by the time we'll do that.
Yeah. Okay, I'm good.
Okay. One thing I did want to mention before we, well, we already adjourned our meeting. But we, our next meeting, I just said, will be on June 10th. Though I did fail to mention, which is very important, is that we do have an agreement with the TTA on our negotiations for the contract. And that MOA has been signed and is now going to be up for a vote with the, with the membership of the unit. So we did let the union know that when we have, you know, because this negotiation has been going on back and forth, and especially given the challenges that we're faced fiscally going forward now with COVID-19 and all of this that is unprecedented. And as Lee even said in her presentation, that first time that I have even heard that this is possible, that there could be cuts during the year in state aid, has really made the negotiations very challenging. I want to thank the union really for their understanding and support of our students and putting their, their needs first. And it was really very refreshing to be able to work together and to come to this agreement with an understanding on both sides as to where our priorities have to be moving forward at this time. So we did say that we would, you know, call a special meeting once we have that back so that, because that's just the process. They're going to vote on it, and then we will vote on it. So as soon as we have that, we will call a meeting. If that is before June 10th, which most likely it will be, in my understanding, you know, it could be Thursday, you know, Wednesday. I don't know, but as soon as we have it, it could be tomorrow. As soon as we have it, we will post the meeting and we will hold a meeting so that we can move forward on that agreement. Is that okay with the rest of the board?
Yep.
Okay. Dress, yes?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so is that it? Anything else, Ms. Goodman?
No, thank you for all your support to the board.
Thank you. So, good night, everyone, thank you. We will again be calling a special meeting in the near future on the MOA with the TTA. Otherwise, we will be back with our regular business meeting on June 10th. And good night, and stay well, stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.